September Board Meeting. I just want everyone to know that as we have in the last two or three meetings, we have moved unscheduled audience participation up towards the front. Why that's significant is because according to policy, you need to have your cards submitted to Angela by the time we get to that point in the meeting. And so if you have an agenda in front of you, you'll notice that non-arranged audience participation is item number four. It's going to come quickly after we get through the consent agenda, which is right at the beginning of the meeting. So I'm just giving you a minute to grab a card. They're right there on that. Would you raise your hand, sir? There we go. Just, there you go. They're right there. There's agendas and cards there, and then you can pick those up, give those to Angela, and then I'll grab them when it's time. All right, we're a few minutes beyond 6:30. Let's rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome, everyone. Mary, would you please do attendance?
Certainly. President Donnelly.
Here.
Vice President Griffith.
Here.
Secretary Hanser, present. Treasurer Bailey, excused. Trustee Alessandro.
Here.
Trustee Foster.
Here.
Trustee Shaper.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mary. Superintendent Weaver, any changes to the board agenda?
Not tonight.
All right. We are moving on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes of the September 6th meeting, minutes of the September 6th closed session meeting, and a list of many new hires. And that is it. Would someone like to put this motion on the floor? Chad?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support? Eric, support? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're moving on to unscheduled audience participation. Some of you may have a card in your hand. Just raise your hand if you have a card that you're trying to get to Angela, and I'll make sure that she, we pause for a second to get those. All right. All right, very good. And Mary, you have your, the light. For those coming up for unscheduled audience participation, you're going to be coming up to the podium. The light will go on once at one minute before the stop time, and then it'll go on a second time when it's time to be done. And so you have that one minute to kind of wrap up what you're wanting to say to the board. And our first person is Jessica. Jessica?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Jessica Tokovich. My daughter has brought up the issue of after-school safety a few times on different calls, and I'm just bringing it forward again. We were at her most recent swim meet. I know I've asked about having the evolved technology in place at regular school runs, and they told me that's not possible. However, we are being able to wheel it outside for football games. So I'm a little confused as to what is allowable for and what's not allowable for, if it's just an issue of what makes money, or doesn't make money for the school, and what we have resources for that way. At this swim meet, too, I watched parents walking down the hallway into a media center, which there's no reason for those numbers to get accessible during that time. There were bathrooms available that were already there. It was past the concession stand. I watched safety stand there and watched parents coming in and all that. I have no idea why they went there. I just don't, unclear as to the access we have to the building and why that is. And that, it's that perception of safety or not safety that causes the concern. So if there's areas, if it can just be public to say, this is what the parameters are and this is why, I think that communication would be really helpful. Again, access to the school, the last two days have been stressful at best. The students who have been able to participate in sports after school, line up outside of the school, they bring their bags in the sports bikes because they didn't come to work. They are not going through the evolved technology. Again, that's causing my child, which is able to enter the building, to have panic attacks. It's not, I'm not saying that we're not safer, or we say right from the top, we're going through, that that's a safer day. The perception of safety in these moments for them are what is their reality, and that is it. She watches this, she sees bags come in, and her thought is, anything can come in at any time and be hidden. And we prove them, or actually we haven't told them, but it's been out there, that things may have been hidden in different places. And so the concept that someone can have access to a school to get to a location to hide something is the perception. So if we're allowing after-school access, I just, I need another reason as to why that's not possible, when we can wheel them outside. So there's that. With the last two days, the attendance, I know that we got an email at the end of the day, and on Sunday, Lee, that said basically, what you need to do for your family, you'll figure that out. The students have not gotten the unilateral message about the stress that they're under and how this addresses their attendance and what latitude there is. Last year, at the end of the year, there was a grace. There was a lot of grace given to attendance, isn't really going to impact this. Do what you need to do. And the academics, the academic behavior of things was a little bit different pace, and we know that. They're coming in under the same stress, and that communication or that latitude is not being felt. When I'm having the conversations with my kid about, I don't think I'm safe, but I don't want to miss the test, that's not part of the equation at that time, and that really shouldn't be part of our decision-making. And that's really where it goes, where, however, I'm having a conversation here and asking chemicals, so will we do virtual? And I appreciate your response on that, why we can't do virtual. It's challenging, I would say that we can do it for some things, but right now, it feels like a need. And for them, they have different ways to address that and not be after the fact. That stress has already gone on for hours. And so I appreciate your communication, and I appreciate where it comes from, but we still have opportunity to do better. And lastly, I would just like some understanding of what are approval processes for access to the school for interviews and the interviewing process, the inside edition interview, where we saw somebody in the building with a large, I'm not going to count on what kind of history I have to tell, and the ability for us to have that. And honestly, it's inside edition. I don't really understand our criteria for who we're allowing to put in, what we're allowing for the interviews, or what we deans of the vibe of the media source to share our experiences and to share our school. And is there a way that we can have some heads up that they're coming out? Because our kids see it, we see it, and it just, it feels just like a hit. All of this stuff just keeps feeling like a hit. And anything we can do to stop that, I would really appreciate, and I appreciate for my kid. So, thank you.
Jessica, thank you. And one of the things I do want you to know, that there's active communication going on about after-school activities and trying to do things we haven't done in the past, which is cordon off areas and do some of those things more strategically. So we hope that you're going to hear more about that soon. And thank you for your other comments.
Thank you.
Raymond Blake, Raymond?
Hi, I'm Raymond Blake. I'm just going to kind of dive in here because I've only got three minutes. I'm going to go, I gave, I'm going to give the board audience the abbreviated version of this correspondence that I've had with Mr. Weaver. I emailed Mr. Weaver to express my concern about what's going on regarding a student who is cross-dressing. And Mr. Weaver did get back to me, and I appreciate that, but the policy that he indicated they were going to pursue was very terrible. Title IX, Mr. Weaver did respond, I thank him, however, the response I got was very terrible. The bottom line is that it appears that this board's policy is that they must comply with Title IX. Title IX, for those who are not aware, is a law that was passed by Congress to assure equal opportunity to minorities to participate in all academic and extracurricular activities. It does, for instance, require schools to offer the same types of sports programs to female and male students alike. The Biden administration has amended the original law to include gender and sexual orientation. Under Title IX, schools cannot discriminate against students whose gender identity is different than their biological identity. This means that a boy who identifies as a girl can participate in girls' sports. Title IX also states that boys who identify as girls can use the same bathrooms, changing rooms, and shower facilities. While it's not limited in power of this board to change Title IX, I feel that most parents are not going to want to just take a knee and kiss the ring of the bottom line of the story. With COVID, threats against school, and a coral attack in 11/30/21, our students and staff have been traumatized enough. I don't want to force teenagers or anyone else to endure a member of the opposite sex sharing bathrooms, showers, et cetera. Just want to dish a note. There have been court cases that ruled that transgender students cannot be forced to use any segregated bathrooms. I think the time has come for this board to stand up and take a leadership position by finding a offering with expertise and challenge in Title IX. We may lose special funding if we do this. I understand it comes to about five and a half million a year. We don't have to just bow to the federal government. Yes, it'll cost money to fight this, but it'll also cost money when the school is sued by some teenage girl who was raped in the girls' bathroom by a boy identifying as a worker. And I hope there's nobody here that thinks that that can't happen here, not after the experience that we've had over the last year. It's time to fight back. It's time to put an end to this woke ideology, this destroying our country. It's time for parents to wake up and put an end to government that thinks it's okay to cater to radical left agendas, regardless of what effect it has on children and families. It's time to take back our government from the fascists that are now in control. Never before have parents been labeled as domestic terrorists simply because they speak up at board meetings. We must put an end to the weaponizing of the Justice Department to go back after their homes. We must return to the system of justice for all. Thank you.
Mr. Blake, thank you. Angela, any others? All right, thank you. All right, everyone, we're moving on to item number five, Board of Education Matters. We had in our packets, and we've looked at two different proclamations coming from the Oakland Community Health Network. One of them declaring September to be a national recovery month, and the other being September as a national suicide prevention month. And they've asked school boards to come alongside and support them in those resolutions, and they were in your packets. So if someone would put the first motion on the floor? Eric?
Move to approve Oakland Community Health Network proclamation for September as National Recovery Month.
Thank you. Is there support? Mary, support? Any discussion?
Do we have it to put up on the screen?
No.
You don't have it?
Anything else? Anyone else comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Would someone like to put the next motion on the floor? Chad?
Move to approve Oakland Community Health Network proclamation for September as National Suicide Prevention Month.
Thank you. Support? Eric, support? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Five B, fellow board members, is kind of at our request, as Jill's last day is the end of this week, and we're going to be looking for a replacement for that position. We kind of asked Ken to hear from us and to maybe have an open discussion on that topic. Ken, why don't you begin by telling us where you're at and what your thoughts are, and then let us branch off of that with our thoughts?
Yeah, so I've talked with Cabinet quite a bit in the interim at the Cabinet level until we are able to settle the positions and give them to an individual or individuals. You know, just to let, you know, Cabinet has gone through and divided up all the responsibilities that Mrs. Lamond had. And then we went over that today at Ad Team, which is all the building administrators plus department administrators, technology administrators, and about thirty-eight, thirty-nine of us, I guess, so to speak. So we went through so that in the interim, we knew who exactly was responsible for what in trying to take care of moving the district forward, that she has so well done over the last year. Now we're at a point, and we've discussed, trying to figure out, and I think Cabinet and myself is leaning more towards trying to make it two positions in separating out the safety and having somebody that's more over, directly over the safety and that aspect, and then having somebody, and not sure if it would be an assistant superintendent's position, executive director or director position. Those would be decided by, I think, down the road, and take your input on that as well two down, later. But we would then look at having somebody that is over school operations and safety as from a Cabinet level, but then having somebody that is like a director of safety that might have more of a direct security background is kind of where we're at. And so I wanted to discuss that. Did you want us to look at trying to keep it one position or look at what we're proposing with having it be two? It's kind of where we're at. And that way, we've got somebody that has, you know, more of that law enforcement, security, because it doesn't have to be like a law enforcement person. It could be somebody that is responsible for like security in hospitals or another school district or something like that. There's many different ways to get experience in what makes a building safer and secure.
All right, Dan?
My opinion is, I would like to give a serious consideration to having it two people. And the reason I say that is because I think it's really, really important that we have one person in a role that has been in a building with a security background. Like you said, Ken, not just, not a police background, but a security background of some sort. But more importantly, that it's going to be in the buildings, looking at things with a critical eye every single day. It doesn't mean you're in one building today, it doesn't mean you're in one building tomorrow, it doesn't mean you're in one, every building, every day. And to have a Cabinet member doing that takes away from the level of responsibility that they have at the Cabinet level. That position would report up to the Cabinet level person. I believe that that is our best opportunity, whether we experience November 30th or not. I believe that if we, if our goal is to show other schools how to do it right, after thinking about it, that is the right way to do it. Every building, every day. Because we can't continue to have kids coming into the buildings with a high level of anxiety, and some may not have any at all. But if we're true to our mission of arts, athletics, academics, everything is important, and every student is important, we have to do what we have to do, no matter the cost, to lower that level of anxiety.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Chad?
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Good points, Dan. I agree wholeheartedly. And I think, as Dan said, I think this is a, I think it is an opportunity to allow us to put even more focus, put somebody in place to focus 100% on securing. And I think the way you worded that, Dan, you brought in the points, academics, arts, athletics, and I think we also need to consider those when we're securing, right? Jessica mentioned swim meets. So actually, you know, we just need to make sure that we're securing the building, securing the community in all of those different scenarios as well. I think that's going to be important. And I think pulling somebody in from outside with that kind of background, somebody that's got experience securing large buildings, securing sporting events, things like that, I think could be very beneficial for us.
I agree. I agree with both of you, and I think that one of those individuals has to be a process thinker, someone who's done it over and over and over again, and done it in different buildings, and thinks about hallways and doors, and thinks about flow and where things are going, that they just have it as the part of their DNA. It's how they walk into something and see it. And getting someone from the outside that has that kind of ability, I think, is, would be good for us to be looking at. Dan? And then Mary?
Thank you. First, I would like to thank Mrs. Lamond for all the work that she has done in this position. It's going to take at least two, be able to fill your seat. You were put into an impossible position, and you really did a great job. Thank you for your service to this community. We appreciate you. I think it will take at least two people, and I support Ken and Cabinet's vision to split that up that way. So I am in agreement.
Thank you, Mary. Dan?
Thanks. One of the things that I forgot to mention earlier is, while this is a position that, you know, we don't hire, we don't, we hire Ken, and Ken does everything else, you know, does all the hiring and HR and all that, I think it's really important that we, as a board, give Ken a lot of input of what we would like to see. I come into these buildings with a very critical eye, always have, always will, because at one point, my students, my children were here, and everybody else in this community's children are just as important as mine to me. And so with that in mind, when I walk into this building, I'm always looking to see if those doors are closed after school. I park for the game, I park in front, walk through the main corridor and check to see if every single one of those blue doors that get into the inner part of our building are locked and closed. It's important, and it should be looked at every single day. And I think we have to, as a board, need to give some of those guidelines and some thoughts to Ken, and then let him filter through that. Because at the end of the day, yes, Ken is responsible for hiring, but this board is responsible for making sure that our vision is met.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other thoughts? All right, Ken, thank you for being proactive enough to get our input, and I know you're going to get some input from the community, too. So why don't you talk about that for a second before we move on?
Sure. Yeah, I was going to mention that. I'm also going to be tomorrow getting input from, we have two committees. One is a district committee, but it is made up of about half first responders who would have expertise in this area, and especially Chief Schultz and Lieutenant Patterson and so forth, and others as well, to Chief Solwold. And so I'll be talking with them, trying to get some input from them, and what they would see as expertise or experience that we should be looking for, skills, qualities, that type of information, as well as to, I've invited the parents that are part of that parent committee as well to be there, and we'll be meeting with them to gather some input as well. They have quite a varied experience, background as well, too, many of them, well, all of them do, in some aspect of security. It was amazing to see when, I think, that Jill put out the call for the parent committee, just how many had, in our area, of our parents have experience in the security industry. So it'll be good to get both aspects, both the first responders as well as this parent group with their security backgrounds. So I don't say excited to do that, obviously, it's, anyways. But I think it will really help us as we move forward in getting a candidate.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, on our agenda, we move to number six, curriculum and instruction. Mrs. Concha Collins and Mr. Wolf?
Hello.
Hello.
All right, good evening. I came here to share a little bit about our summer engagement, all the different ways that we engage, really thousands of students over the summer, starting at infant all the way through high school. So in total, we saw 2,428 students in various capacities, whether that was in summer school, credit recovery, a summer camp, a lot of different ways that we engage the kids. So 2,000, sorry, the SBL Summer Activities, 2,428 kids. We also served 16,000, I rounded those, like 15,000, nine, something, but it was a better, 16,100 meals were served, breakfast and lunch through the meal program. So I think those are very impressive numbers. So thank you to a bunch of our staff that are here that helped in that aspect. I want to start by highlighting summer camp and summer care at OELC. My very own 15-month-old was part of summer camp at OELC. I was tempted to include his picture, but didn't want to show favor to them. They saw 250 students this summer. They really serviced students through the whole summer. They went out one week at the end to reset their facilities, and then one week at the end, again, to reset facilities for school. They had a variety of wonderful activities for the kids of all ages. They had Robo-Arach came in and did activities with the kids. They held an art class. They had a magician. They took various field trips. They partnered with Oakland County Parks that came in and did some activities also. And they helped to raise some funds for the Canines Rescue League through a fun run and walk. And these are honestly just very small representation of everything that they did. Every week, parents that participated, you got a newsletter that showed you what your kids would have an opportunity to experience. So, and these are some of the pictures that they shared with us from summer camp. As far as summer learning goes, we had 488 students participate in the academic aspects. So Cedar Elementary and Middle School had 312 students. OVA Online completely had 24 students, and Credit Recovery had 152 students. And any of that 152 is also representative of some OVA students, depending on the grade level that they fell in. These are pictures I actually took from the Cedar Summer School at Elementary when I visited. We ran social-emotional learning lessons also weekly, and really used our academic data from the school year to tailor the curriculum for the students, and we did the same thing last year. So while some things may be repeated this year, some things are different based on their academic needs. Continued summer engagement. We had opportunities for our families to participate in GRAS, which is like a summer academic program. They mail you lessons, and students complete the lessons, you mail them back, and they give you feedback. That goes weekly, there are nine lessons, and over ninety meetings. We had 227 students participate in that support, and due to grant funding, we were able to really deeply discount that for families. It normally costs about $68, and we were able to discount it to $10 per subject because of the grants. Additionally, we engaged 239 elementary students in reunion engagement plans. That was done at all of our Cedar schools, also at OVA, and different experiences. Sometimes kids came in and literally had a book write to them, and, you know, younger kids participating in bubbles. Older kids participated in book clubs, where they got to choose the books that they wanted to participate in and discuss them. Word Means reallows, and some authors in art, where they studied a particular author and were able to do an art project. And again, these are some pictures from those months. Summer feeding, I don't know if Patty's here, I want to put her on the spot, but Patty worked really hard to really get me a second location of summer feeding. I felt it was very important to align where we were offering summer school, and I have her on the kitchen there. And through very complicated governmental things, OES is the only really approved summer feeding site. But she really advocated and was able to add Lakeville to that, which is where we held our summer school. So that is a big reason why we were able to serve so many meals, because the kids that came into school were able to participate in the meal program as well. So specifically, the numbers are 5,800 breakfast meals served and a little over 10,000 lunch meals served over the summer. At Lakeville, the women that were
with a very critical eye, always have, always will, because at one point, my students, my children were here, and everybody else in this community's children are just as important as mine to me. And so, with that in mind, when I walk into this building, I'm always looking to see if those doors are closed after school. I park for the game, I park in front, walk through the main corridor and check to see if every single one of those blue doors that get into the inner part of our building are locked and closed. It's important, and it should be looked at every single day. And I think we have to, as a board, need to give some of those guidelines and some thoughts to Ken, and then let him filter through that. Because at the end of the day, yes, Ken is responsible for hiring, but this board is responsible for making sure that our vision is met.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other thoughts? All right. Ken, thank you for being proactive enough to get our input, and I know you're gonna get some input from the community too, so why don't you talk about that for a second before we move on?
Sure. Yeah, I was gonna mention that. I'm also going to be tomorrow getting input from, we have two committees. One is a district committee, but it is made up of about half first responders who would have expertise in this area, and especially Chief Schultz and Lieutenant Patterson and so forth, and others as well, to Chief Solwold. And so, I'll be talking with them, trying to get some input from them, and what they would see as expertise or experience that we should be looking for, skills, qualities, that type of information, as well as to, I've invited the parents that are part of that parent committee as well to be there, and we'll be meeting with them to gather some input as well. They have quite a varied experience, background as well, too, many of them, well, all of them do, in some aspect of security. It was amazing to see, when I think that Jill put out the call for the parent committee, just how many had, in our area, of our parents have experience in the security industry. So, it'll be good to get both aspects, both the first responders as well, as this parent group with their security backgrounds. So, I don't say excited to do that, obviously, it's, anyways. But I think it will help us as we move forward in getting a candidate.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. On our agenda, we move to number six, curriculum and instruction. Mrs. Concha Collins and Mr. Wolf?
Hello.
Hello.
All right. Good evening. I came here to share a little bit about our summer engagement, all the different ways that we engage really thousands of students over the summer, starting at infant all the way through high school. So, in total, we saw 2,428 students in various capacities, whether that was in summer school, credit recovery, a summer camp, a lot of different ways that we engaged the kids. So, 2,000, sorry, the SCL summer activities, 2,428 kids. We also served 16,000, I rounded it, I was like 15,000, nine, something, but was a better figure. 16,100 meals were served, breakfast and lunch through the meal programs. I think those are very impressive numbers. So, thank you to a bunch of our staff that are here that helped me down that ass. I want to start by highlighting summer camp and summer care at OELC. My very own 15-month-old was part of summer camp at OELC. I was tempted to include his picture, but didn't want to show favor to them. They saw 250 students this summer. They really serviced students through the whole summer. They went out one week at the end to reset their facilities, and then one week at the end, again, to reset facilities for school. They had a variety of wonderful activities for the kids of all ages. They had Robo-Arach came in and did activities with the kids. They held an art class. They had a magician. They took various field trips. They partnered with Oakland County Parks that came in and did some activities also. And they helped to raise some funds for the Canines Rescue League through a fun run and walk. And these are honestly just very small representation of everything that they did. Every week, parents that participated, you got a newsletter that showed you what your kids would have an opportunity to experience. So, and these are some of the pictures that they shared with us from summer camp. As far as summer learning goes, we had 488 students participate in the academic aspects. So, Cedar Elementary and Middle School had 312 students. OVA Online completely had 24 students, and Credit Recovery had 152 students. And any of that 152 is also representative of some OVA students, depending on the grade level that they fell in. These are pictures I actually took from the Cedar Summer School at Elementary when I visited. We ran social emotional learning lessons also weekly, and really used our academic data from the school year to tailor the curriculum for the students. And we did the same thing last year. So, while some things may be repeated this year, some things are different based on their academic Continued summer engagement. We had opportunities for our families to participate in GRAS, which is like a summer academic program. They mail you lessons, and students complete the lessons, you mail them back, and they give you feedback. That goes weekly. There are nine lessons and over ninety meetings. We had 227 students participate in that support. And due to grant funding, we were able to really weekly discount that for families. It normally costs about $68, and we were able to discount it to $10 per subject because of the grants. Additionally, we engaged 239 elementary students in re-engagement plans. That was done at all of our Cedar schools, also at OVA, and different experiences. Sometimes kids came in and literally had a book write to them, and, you know, younger kids participating in bubbles. Older kids participated in book clubs, where they actually choose the books that they wanted to participate in and discuss them. Word Means, Reallows, and some authors in art, where they studied a particular author and were able to do an art project. And again, these are some pictures from those months. Summer feeding. I don't know if Patty's here, I don't want to put her on the spot, but Patty worked really hard to really get me a second location of summer feeding. I felt it was very important to align where we were offering summer school, and I have everyone who gets in there. And through very complicated governmental things, OES is the only really approved summer feeding site. But she really advocated and was able to add Lakeville to that, which is where we held our summer school. So, that is a big reason why we were able to serve so many meals, because the kids that came into school were able to participate in the meal program as well. So, specifically, the numbers are 5,800 breakfast meals served and about a little over 10,000 lunch meals served over the summer. At Lakeville, the women that were working the summer feeding program set it up as a fiesta theme, that they had different games out with the kids. A lot of families would come in and actually play a game while they were feeding, so it was great family engagement as well. And big hit were SCL, our social emotional learning summer activities. The major goal here was to have our kids come in and be engaged with one another, to be able to interact and do fun things together. In total, 1,248 students participated K-12. That we have here on the elementary side, as our secondary students are a little more involved in sports and different games. I listed a variety of events that they participated in. The SCL coordinators could not believe that bingo was like such a big day. Next summer, they go to Lakeville, they're more bingo, but they loved the bingo nights, they loved the service days. Those probably have the biggest participation as far as, especially the secondary students. And I'm just ending, I think, the last two slides, just to have a variety of pictures. You can see kids of all ages, from high school kids, elementary kids, engaged in the activities. I've been spending, it's been taking me a really long time, yes, a lot of things have come, but I know that we obviously offered very generous hourly wages for even students for our staff who runs summer school for any of these summer activities. I've been writing everybody and writing a card because it's not just about the money. It's, their time after a really tough year is really impressive. We engaged dozens of staff, K-12, to make this possible. And from any of our schools, some are from OVA, some are from our Cedar schools, so we are truly grateful that they were able to, this was not possible without that. And so, I just wanted to give them all a shout out, because they deserve it.
Great work.
Can I make a comment to Anita?
Please, please.
I just wanted to say, as a parent, too, I thought it was really well communicated. I mean, I always get things multiple times, because I have more than one kid, but it was just very, very clear, like, this is going on this day, this is the schedule for middle school, this is the schedule. So, I think families that have multiple kids, it was easy to say, hey, we can make it to this, and hey, we can't make it to that, or, you know, stick it on your kid's door, or whatever. I just, I felt it was well communicated. I want to tell you. Yeah.
Thank you. It's really handy, and...
Okay. There you go.
...for the...
Mrs. Danielle Stavaleski.
Yes. Well, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Also, too, I just would like to thank that we had a parent group that helped us as well with the summer SCL activities. They really worked tirelessly. I cannot name them necessarily, because of, I think one is running for the board, but the, they were very instrumental in a lot of the work, and it was really great. And they worked very tirelessly to provide a lot of great activities as well, too, and we tried to partner with them and try to help make sure that those activities were supported as well by the staff as well. But they were great. They were put on, they were organized, they were fun activities, and we're hoping with, that we're able to do again the same thing next summer, and with a little bit more advanced notice, be able to, because the older crowd is a little bit harder to engage in this, like Mrs. Concha Collins mentioned, due to other requirements, a lot of them are working like my own kids and stuff like that, or have other camps and other activities and that. But it was great to get them involved and get them back in, sometimes into the school, sometimes the activities were at other locations and that, and they did a fantastic job with that. So, the more we can keep them busy and engaged, I think the better off that they will be. So, I want to thank that parent group as well, too.
Awesome. Anyone else? Dan?
Anita, I appreciate the update on what happened, all the activities that happened. But I will say this, I ran into a couple of our teachers that came in and worked over the summer. And, you know, you do what you do, you thank them. And they said, you know, we didn't really realize it, but that was very therapeutic. They said it didn't help us heal a lot by just being in the buildings, it was a little calmer, a little less. So, that really hit home to me, where you have so many different levels of comfort with being in the buildings. And there's a lot of different layers to it. And so, I started to think that, you know, this, there's a certain segment of population that their healing process came from being in the buildings and being with the kids. And then there's another group of the population that were just taking a break, they just needed to get something, you know, the summer underneath them. And there's still yet a population that needs a little bit more support and a little bit more help. And it really brought it home when you started talking to some of the teachers, that they really appreciated being asked. And I, at the end of it, I don't think it was about the money, I think it was about the healing process for them. So, that's just, it was very enlightening when you heard them tell the story and their feelings and their emotions. So, it looks like a great, it looked, from the photos you took, great, different levels of students. So, I really appreciate all the effort, not just by you, but, you know, entire central office team, it worked hard. And again, what Ken said, I want to echo Ken, there's a group of parents that just dug in, and they went after it, and that's really what we're here to do, is get that level of support from them as well.
I want to tell you a story that just popped up, but it's not really a story, but something that popped up, to just to shut the light up, the intentionality that a lot of our teachers have. When I staffed the elementary summer school, I try to staff on based on the grade level I already teach, because it makes it a little bit easier not to learn the whole curriculum. I had two teachers request to teach the grade level four, and they said, I want to meet the kids I might have next year. So, there's a lot of thought and intentionality from our teachers, that they're always thinking about, like, the next, and maybe should, if they're being there. So, I just thought I might have to work.
Very good. Anyone else? Thank you so much. Wonderful. Oh, Mary?
Thank you. Thank you, Anita, and your team, and all the staff. I can see the love that they put into all this. Thank you. I love the presentation, too. Thank you for sharing all the data and all the things that were happening, because there were a lot of things going on. And behind it all, there we were looking at data, so we're bringing forth materials while kids are busy having fun. They're, they might be learning something in there, too. So, thank you for tying all that back into the data. That's important, to have that tie-in. So, thank you very much, and congrats to your team.
All right. We're moving on to item, well, Mr. Pass, item eight. Mr. Barney, you don't have anything today?
No.
All right, sir. Thank you. David Pass, Dr. Pass, I got that DR there, Dr. Pass.
Good evening. So, I want to thank the board for approving our personnel recommendations. You can see that's a compilation of our, of our certified staff that we have hired throughout the summer. Our building administrators to lead on the learning process for all of their personnel, their buildings this year. And so, they did a great job, and we were able to find some very, very qualified candidates, or candidates to replace some of the many, you know, qualified and experienced people that left this year. So, some of the information that we're going to give this evening really kind of highlights a significant amount of change that we have been through over the last year. So, I want to start with the retirements. And I'm not going to read through all these names, but I did want you to have all this information in your packet, so you have an idea of who we, who was retired, who are resignations were across the district over the last year, so you get an idea of positions and buildings where those people were assigned. The retirements were people that we honored at the end of the year, those who were able to attend our retirement reception. And then we also had a number of resignations across the district, and these resignations include all staff members, including preschool, transportation, food service. And so, as you kind of look through, you know, we really kind of want to look at this information as people are leaving the district and try and understand the reasons that people might be leaving, or what opportunities they might be leaving for. Surprisingly, there's, you know, there are, there's a significant variety of reasons that people have left the district. You know, obviously, I think one of the most significant ones that we have seen and we've discussed at the board level before, is that we're seeing a lot more transferability in the educational sector than has ever existed. You know, five years ago, just that short period of time, you know, teachers didn't have the luxury of being able to move to other districts and kind of retain that salary or those steps. And the availability of teachers in the market has really made that market more competitive. You know, a high percentage of the new employees we see in the district are interns, they're coming from other districts. A very small number of them are recent graduates from college, there just aren't as many people in the market anymore. And so, you know, the demands are such that, you know, teachers now can leave, move to other districts, you know, and most of them are leaving for geographic reasons. They're able to go back and work in their homeschool district, where their kids attend school, oftentimes, the buildings where their kids attend. And so, let's say that was probably a majority factor of, you know, some of the resignations that we had, is people, you know, leaving for that reason. And certainly, some of those reasons may be linked to, you know, some of the things that we've been through. So, but a variety of reasons across the board, you know, in terms of individuals and why they may have chosen other positions or even other careers in some cases, where people leave the career of education completely. So, we've got a few pages here of the resignations, and this goes back to September 1st of 2021. I want to give you individual data based over the last year of who has resigned from Oxford Schools and their positions. And then following, I wanted to provide a little bit of a trend in terms of, you know, what we've kind of seen over the last five years. And so, what I want to point out in this data, this is a little bit different, in that this data does not include food service, OELC, or transportation. Those tend to be some of our more transient groups, so this just focuses on our, our paraprofessionals activities. When I say other, we're talking about our classified or non-represented staff, so that would include, you know, central office employees, administrators, and then, you know, of course, we've got our teachers. So, in 2021, between resignations and retirements, we have seen 64 people who part of the district over the last year. And as you can see, when we compare that to the 2021, or 2020, 2021 school year, that was 44. So, certainly a significant jump in the most recent year, in even the year before. When we back up a couple more years into 1920, that was 13 employees, nine retirements, 21 resignations. 1819 was very similar, 22 resignations and 10 retirements. And then going back to 1718, we've seen 26 resignations and 10 retirements. So, certainly over the last couple of years, we've seen that trend have increased. And I would tell you, I think that's measured with, you know, the demands in the teaching profession and marketability. And, you know, we see that specifically in a lot of key areas, you know, CTE, special education, secondary math science, a lot of shortage areas, position for our most marketable staff in the job market, who can, you know, when you've got good people, they've got the capacity to transfer those skills pretty much anywhere. And oftentimes, they raises, you know, to some of the districts that they're going to. So, that's just sort of the trend that we're seeing in current times. But I would also say, on the flip side, we're also seeing those people who are coming to our community for that reason. You know, we have hired a number of people who are residents in the community, want to be here, want to serve our community, the kids attend here, and have been drawn to Oxford for the same reason that some people that have chosen to leave the district. So, so we're seeing that as well. So, I wanted to, again, I don't want to read through all of these, but did want the board to see all of the new positions. And so, the new positions are positions that did not exist in the prior year. And so, a variety of reasons for many of these new positions. Some are a result of the tragedy, and bringing the appropriate personnel on board to be able to help us move forward and provide our students the supports that they need. Some of them in special education, we've got different additional delivery model at the high school with special education staff, we've been able to allocate some of our customer funds to increase the staff in that area, where we've increased the social worker, psychologist, speech pathologist, some additional resource from teachers. And of course, administrative staff, and we've talked about many of these have been, you know, to the board before, in terms of our conversation about, you know, these positions that have been added across the district. And then some of them, you know, it was a part of collective bargaining, you know, for example, we've added the office paraprofessionals at the elementary levels to support our full-time administrative assistants that did not have any help in the office. And so, you know, that was a part of collective bargaining. You can see here, some of our counselors at the high school, and we're expanding our counselors over there. So, those are the new positions across the district. Those mentioned in here are parer educators, some are based on need, increased needs across the district as well, and OVA specifically with the instructional paraprofessionals, but then also those office professional, paraprofessionals that were added in all four elementary levels, with the exception of Leonard. So, just to give you kind of a synopsis of what we've seen over the course of the year, you know, we have 63 new employees to the district. I'm sure the board has seen postings all summer long, some of those new positions and new hires, but also a lot of transfers within the district. And so, I wanted to have an understanding of what's happened in that area. So, 63 new employees, 49 internal transfers, five open positions. This was in your board deck on Thursday, I saw you have a date. So, we have also a couple more positions now that were, that were filling even more recently. So, they see some postings in the next couple days. And then just a screenshot, you know, and this is really kind of a shout out to my department. As you can see from all the new employees and the internal transfers, it's kept our department pretty busy. And we give credit to the other folks in our department to really kind of help manage and coordinate these processes, and give administrative some information that they need, and, you know, scheduling and coordinating interviews. So, did a great job, you know, managing the process this summer. So, huge thank you to our department. So, I mentioned current vacancies. We are actually going to be interviewing tomorrow for the human resources coordinator position, replaced by the board's awareness, taking up directorship in resources for middle schools. So, she will be greatly missed, and Ferndale is going to be greatly rewarded by having her there. So, we're very happy for her. We are still in the process of filling that high school, middle school, ELA, and NYPD coach. We have a clear like instructional curriculum. Sorry. OVA administrative assistant, which we're actually getting, just got a recommendation on, and then St. Joe's Spanish teacher. And then, we will be in the process of posting our athletic management, Brian Granberg, who just informed us, taking a new position outside of the district. And we'll just receive a resignation, and we'll be looking for an ASG statistic, a parer teacher for Lakeville Elementary, so those postings will, we'll also. And then overall, I want to give just some indication to the board, when we talk about some of those new positions, for example, Sash Masowski, he was in one of those new positions, his position was elevated and new responsibilities, so he was promoted to a director position, but obviously not in adding staff to the district. And so, wanted to kind of boil down all of those new staff into FTE. In other words, from a budgetary standpoint, we have six non-represented employees, again, central office staff, OVA central staff, you know, cap members, those will be our non-represented employees, 6.0 FTE, OEA, and OAA. So, teachers, administrative representatives, 17.5 FTE increase, and then our parer and administrative assistants, that was 6.0 FTE overall. I don't have the data, but I think it reasonably tells you that most of these positions are covered through grant funds in the district as we see. So, you know, just to give you some indication of how those are being financed, we've got the SRR funds, we've got funds that come through the EDP, other safety, mental health grants that the district has received, as well as made from, their money from the state of Michigan. So, we've been able to, you know, fund some of these positions, most of these positions, through those additional funding sources. I believe that is it. So, no questions? I believe that is it. So if you have any questions, I'd like to know.
Doctor Pass, thank you. Anyone have anything for Mr. Pass? Mary?
Thank you very much for the data. I really appreciate that. And looking at the, when I was looking at my board packet, just looking at this group of new hires, and I know what else we've been doing this summer, so definitely a shout out to your team also. I can see you all have been very, very busy and congratulations for getting all this done. I do, I appreciate seeing the trends and the data as presented. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Two questions for you. Going back to, going back to the resignations, the way you described that, is it, is it fair to say that if we were to look at other districts around us, that their number of resignations might look the same? Not in exact numbers, but the trajectory you showed us from 2017 to, to present. Would you, would you expect that the trajectory would be similar?
I would say yes. In terms of a pattern, I would think that there would be some similarity in terms of them seeing more in recent years in the past. I couldn't necessarily qualify that to a number, you know.
Right.
If someone is seeing the, you know, the same, same number of staff, certainly some districts more than others. You know, we tend to attract candidates from certain districts more frequently than, than others. And sometimes that's a product of circumstances that they, you know, some of the folks have done in, in those districts for some period of time. And so, you know, I think, I think it varies, but there's definitely a way different trend now. You know, and it's certainly turned into more of a year round. You know, it used to be, you know, years ago, you stacked up and you're ready to go for the year. And now the problem is there are vacancies still in districts across the county and across the state. And so there are districts that are constantly looking for staff. And so we've just kind of followed ourselves on a cycle where, you know, certainly the majority of our hires, as you can see, happen, you know, from, from May through August. But we continue to see that cycle during, during the school year now more than we ever have before.
Okay, thanks. And the other question I had was, you had mentioned that some of the, the positions that we're filling are grant funded. Does that make them time boxed? Or is it too early to tell if, if they would be? And I don't want to use the word temporary, but I guess for the sake of lack of a better term.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's a great question. And, and I think we're at the preliminary phases, and certainly Mr. Weaver and I have had these conversations, you know, in terms of, you know, looking three years, four years, five years down the road. You know, where are our needs going to be? And I think there's a lot of factors involved in that, you know, certainly where, where our funding sources come from the state. You know, we hope that, you know, the state will put in some permanent funding. For some reason, anyone with mental health needs or safety, you know, we're seeing some momentum and some lobbying around those areas. You know, so hopefully, you know, we can, we can rely on state to step up when, you know, let's say they keep grading, they run out, or some of those other funds are exhausted. And so, you know, there's some information that we're gonna have to wait and see how, how that evolves. You know, I think the most immediate thing is addressing our needs, you know, making sure that we're providing, you know, our community and our students the support necessary to come forward. But, you know, that is something that we're gonna have to look at from a budgetary standpoint, you know, over the next couple of years. But I would say with confidence in certainly many of these areas, and one of the areas that we've, we've increased staffing in, in special education, some of that is, is bound by, you know, case flows and state accounting requirements. But we also know in some of these areas, there's, there's more transitivity in, in our staffing population. You know, we're, we're hiring special education and teachers every year. You know, and that's partly because those folks are the most marketing for people, you know, out there. And so, you know, we know in the future, you know, if there are some constraints that we need to work within, you know, we're fairly confident that we'll be able to work with attrition to be able to rightsize in certain areas if we need to. So, but definitely, you know, to kind of summarize, it's clearly at the forefront in, in terms of, you know, understanding, you know, that these are grant funds and we're going to make some very concrete plans in the future, you know, keeping an eye on that, you know, addressing everything, but making sure that we're being fully responsible.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Doctor Pass, thank you.
Thank you.
Jill Lamont, thank you for your service to the district and wish you the best in the future.
I just wanted to reach you tonight, actually, I'm remembering on regarding our schools of choice dates. I'm voting, I'm seeing, but I just wanted to make you aware of that, in case you have any questions this evening. Basically, they're running from ninth grade up limited district wide, and then for full-time students only at the Marshall Academy, 10th and 11th grades. And dates are reflected on the, the best timing for us to coordinate with enrollment and with the school offices to start second semester, and for the elementary levels to start second trimester. So nothing quite out of the ordinary there, just wanted to draw your attention to it tonight. And at the next morning, someone else will be asking you to vote on that.
Any questions or comments about the, uh, schools of choice? Go ahead, Dan.
I know the answer to it, but I'm just gonna ask, because it's been asked several times by, by people. I think it's important to remind everybody that the school of choice, once you are here, if we close school of choice, you are still an Oxford student.
Correct.
Correct. You don't have to reapply every year. Once you, if you come in in fifth grade and if your school of choice, let's say you're from Lake Orion, and you want to come here in fifth grade, you stay until you, you graduate or you decide to go someplace else, your, your natural district or if you go somewhere else. There was, I've been asked a couple different times. If your student choice.
Someone voted it down.
Correct. If, if the next board gets seated and say, you know what, we're done with school of choice. That student that's already here is already here and they don't have to leave. I guess that's the question. Correct. As long as it's, the way that I remember it being written is it's contiguous. So that would be the problem. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anything else on this subject? Alright.
And then for the safety update, I just wanted to let you know, so the, the district has not only the policies that we have with the board, or vote on policies, we have our administrative guidelines. As you know, I just wanted to formally announce this to the public and to the boards. As you all know, we are going to be formally adopting 8400A, which is going to accompany our threat assessment form, 8400F1. What we've always done, threat assessment and utilize many of these, you know, steps. I wanted to make it a little more formal and ensure that it was sort of submitted in our administrative guidelines. And so I did just want to let you know about this evening, and it will accompany the form. As I mentioned, our administrators are aware of this, and just wanted to make sure especially on my exit that that was sort of in our, in our administrative guidelines moving forward.
Thank you so much for that.
With regard to the current threat to the district, I was able to speak with our high school resource officer before this meeting approximately two hours ago. I have no new update for you. I do just want to really publicly thank both Officer Repolski, Deputy Repolski's here at the high school, and then Deputy Barnes, our new school resource officer that I've not yet introduced you to from middle school, have spent countless hours on this along with their command staff. So these investigations are really seeking very difficult items on social media. And while I'm hopeful that we will have more of a, you know, happy ending to this one, so to speak. I don't know that will be the case. I just wanted to update you tonight and want to not mention that we are still investigating them, and the local community sheriffs are doing them. So I want to thank them. I would like to introduce you to the new school resource officers, and I think that would be an upcoming meeting. They may join the new safety person, so you can put some faces with some new names. They've been fantastic to work with, so. And then just on a personal note, it's been an honor to serve this board as the weekend that I love so much. So thank you for having me.
Thank you. Anything else for Jill? Yes, Heather.
And I just wanted to say, I know I reached out to you personally, but I, I know, I know the dedication that you've given to these students and the staff. Many, many questions. I, I know you've spent hours on the phone with people, answering questions and, and doing everything that you can, and I just, your shoes will be extremely hard to fill. Extremely hard to fill. But I wish you the very best. I think you're gonna, you're gonna be awesome. You're gonna do great there. I, I'm not surprised that they recruited you at all. So I just wanted to wish you, wish you well.
Dan?
So I don't know if you read in your contract, but the fine print says, we get that service in perpetuity. I am, I'm extremely proud of you. You know that. You have done a job that nobody would want to do. And you've done it very well. And you've been criticized. You've been raked over the coals. You have been yelled at. But you've done it in a manner that, quite honestly, I admire. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else?
Thanks, Jill.
Jill, thank you. Alright, as you can see, we moved our closed session to the end, so people that could be released while we go do what we need to do. You have an item number 10, scheduled activities, board meetings. Please note that some of our board meetings are gonna start moving and going to the different schools, which we, we requested to get back to that, which is a normal pattern. Superintendent Weaver, anything under clarification?
Really, the only thing I'd like to clarify is that, you know, you passed a resolution on suicide prevention. Monk, I've asked the assistant superintendents of instructions to make sure that they get with building principles and that we have the appropriate activity or activities for students and/or parents, depending on the age level, of course, it all being appropriate to make sure prevention, you know.
That is out there first and foremost. Something. Thank you very much. Final board comments? Dan?
I didn't want to put Jill's in that because then that would have been too long, so. I just want to touch on two things that were brought up today in, in public comment. There are a lot of opportunities for every school district to keep their buildings safer. And I find it amazing that we look at it from the perspective of local school, school boards. Because at the end of the day, it's our responsibility to keep our buildings and our students as safe as possible. I can't help but draw the comparison to the second part of the audience participation that put it on the government. In a way, we are the government, but in a way, we're not. We must follow the rules. We must follow the laws, whether we agree with them personally, whether we have a religious belief, a political belief. That's not what this seat is. The seat is to follow the law. It's not to interject our personal belief. I have my opinions on some laws that we have to follow. But I don't have that luxury. We don't have that luxury. I think the number was thrown out there, $5 million in lost funding. People would lose their mind if we turned down $5 million of lost funding because we decided we just wanted to just do what we wanted to do. I think our administrators understand the complexities of it. I think our, I think our central office understands the complexities of it. And we are going to do whatever we can to make sure that all students get a proper, free, public education. Complain with me all you want. That's gonna be my position. That's just how I, I just don't understand that people want to just look at it from a perspective of, this is what my personal belief is. It's not, it's not for ours to choose what laws to pass. It's ours to follow.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? Closing comments? Alright, so then it is 7:38. We're gonna go into closed session. We gotta do the motion, right? Okay, very good. Yep. So would someone like to put the close, yes, Heather?
Move to meeting closed sessi- ugh. Move to meeting closed session pursuant to the open meetings, section 8A, to consider a periodic personal evaluation of an employee. Roll call vote?
Uh, let's do the, um, is there a second? We missed this last time.
Oh.
Second? Yes, Chad, second. Any discussion? Alright, seeing none. Roll call vote?
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. De Alessandro?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Hanser, yes. Mr. Bailey is excused. Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes. Alright. Thank you very much, everyone. 9:10, we're coming out of closed session, going back into open. Board members, thank you very much. Superintendent Weaver, is there anything under other? Uh, no, there's not. Anyone else? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned, and it's a great evening to be a Wildcat. Thank you very much.